Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission Meeting of September 26, 2023. I call the meeting to order, and will note for the record a quorum of the members present. Before we get started, I'd just like to remind everyone to silence their phones. And if you plan to speak, public comment today for any reason, if you just sign in in the corner over here and put your address, that will save you having to state your address publicly. For that, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item is Consider a Motion to Approve the Regular Agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda? Any item on the consent agenda? All right. If not, are there any requests by the Commission to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider a special event malt beverage and on-sale wine retailer's license for the banquet at the W H Lyons Fairground on October 19th. Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. The Auditor's Office received an application for a special event on-sale wine retailer's license and special event malt beverage retailer's license from the banquet. They will be holding Chili Fest at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds on October 19th. This license will allow the organization to sell wine and malt beverages to be consumed on-site. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning Department, and no objections or concerns were raised. The cost for each of the licenses $50 per day along with a publishing fee.
All right. Any questions for Kim? So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of this application, a proponent for this application? Okay. You could go ahead and come to the...
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah. Just that we're trying to come back from COVID and bring the Chili Fest back. We've had that as a fundraiser for years, so...
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone here in opposition to this request? All right. Seeing none, there's no need for a rebuttal. I'll turn it to the Commission. Discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special event malt beverage and on-sale license.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. Takes us to item 10, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution to vacate a legally recorded plat. Mason Stephan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. So the County Planning Department has received a petition from the South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs to vacate a legally recorded plat within the unincorporated area of the county. The area to be vacated is a Highway H lot that is located between 476th Avenue and the new South Dakota Veterans Cemetery. The piece of property was never acquired from the landowner, and the plat was mistakenly recorded as an official document. In accordance with CDC L 11-3-22.1, a petition to vacate a recorded plat must be heard at a public hearing of the County Commission after proper notice via the county newspapers, and this is that public meeting. Notice has been published within the official county newspapers, and the petitioner was notified of this meeting. Therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners pursuant to CDC L 11-3-23.1 may approve or deny the attached resolution to vacate the legally recorded plat. And I'll just go to the map here just so we can refresh our memory on where it is. So this is the entrance into the Laurel Ridge Wedding Barn, and this is the Slip-Up Creek Road that was reconstructed. This sliver of H lot right here at the end of their driveway is specifically what will be vacated. So go to the little zoomed-out version here to show exactly where it's located, but I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mason? Commissioner Karski.
Are we vacating something we never legally owned? Is that what you're saying?
In essence, yes. The land is technically still owned by Tyler Childress or Laurel Ridge Wedding Barn, and it was filed with Register of Deeds and put on the map by the GIS Department, but it was never owned by the Highway Department, so...
Okay. Just so I understand.
Right. In essence, just being asked to correct a mistake that was made.
Correct. Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Mason? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this motion, a proponent? Good morning.
Madam Commissioner, my name's Aaron Pollard. I'm the Deputy Secretary for the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs. I'm the one that sent in the petition to vacate, and everything that Mr. Stephan said is essentially correct. And I hate to admit it, but when I went to, we did obtain some H lots with this road project, and this was one that we had potentially identified, but then ended up not obtaining or needing. So when I went to file the H lots that we did obtain, this one was with those, so it was just mistakenly filed. So I'd ask that you vacate the plat, please.
All right. Thank you.
I'll stand by for questions if you have any for me.
Any questions? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing none, I would turn it back over to the Commission.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 11, which is a briefing on the Minnehaha County Fiscal Year 2022 Audit. Is Jeff Schaefer here? Oh, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit, and we just recently completed your fiscal and compliance audit for FY '22. Each of you has been provided with a management letter that would summarize any and all findings that we felt material to the finding, or if there's any material findings to the audit. But as you noticed, if you look on page two, there's nothing noted down there that we thought was material enough to bring to the board. There are other items of a less significant nature that we talked with appropriate officials, but there wasn't nothing material. We believe issuing an unmodified opinion on the audit, so I really have nothing of any major consequential report to you. So unless you have any questions?
It's always good to get an audit report that has nothing major to report. So are there any questions for Jeff? All right. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Well, thank you very much for being here this morning. We appreciate your work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2024 budget for Minnehaha County. So we jumped from 2022 straight to 2024. That's how my life feels some days, so...
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. We have been talking about budget for many, many months, and today we are at the time where we request your adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget. The materials you have in front of you are... There were no changes from our briefing on the 19th. Just to remind you, our budget is just over $169 million. That includes, which that number includes inter-fund transfers between General Fund and Building, General Fund and Emergency Management Fund. Our cash applied total is just over $57 million, but of that, $47 million is related to the Juvenile Justice Center project, and about $10 million is related to General Fund. Included in that were the 18 new positions that you approved, including 14 that are for the jail expansion into UC3 at the time that it is needed in 2024. Related to the documents that you have in front of you, I'll just scroll through them a little bit. This file here in front of you is the means of finance showing the revenue into the various different funds and the cash applied totals. And then down here are the expenditures by department and by fund. When we get all through this, what you are asked today is to approve the resolution that's in front of you related to the adoption of the budget. These are the levy calculations for Minnehaha County-funded services. The levies total 3.036, which is our lowest levy rate since 2012. And this is a chart that shows that. I'll just pause here to see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Susan?
And then...
Commissioner Karski?
Just remind me, Susan, does the levy include the opt-out percentage, too?
Correct.
It does. Okay. Thank you.
And then this is the resolution in also that shows the changes from provisional budget to final budget that will be published in the paper as well.
Any questions? Do you have anything else you want to say?
I do not.
I think sometimes we get to this point in the year, and we've kind of beat the topic to death, and it's a little anticlimactic because we've asked all of our questions when we get to this point. Is there anyone here for public comment on the budget this morning? All right. I'll turn it over to the Commission. Commissioner Benega.
I would make a motion to approve the adopted fiscal 2024 budget as printed. I'd also like to congratulate Susan and her staff in putting together an audit that was totally clean, which has been awesome. They've worked really hard at the budget, but also with the audit responsibilities.
I will second that and thank the Auditor's Office as well.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a second. Roll call vote. My bad. Thank you.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County to sponsor a grant for Split Rock Township. Jason Germain, good morning.
Good morning, Jason Germain, Minnehaha County, Emergency Management. I'm here today. I've been working with Split Rock Township off and on for the last couple of years. They've been wanting to fix a road, 264th Street. The nickname for it is Spook Road, if you're aware of that. I think 2019, there was some damage from flooding, and we've been trying to get the state to help us with the hazardous mitigation grant. So I reached out to, recently reached out to CCOG, who's here today for any questions. One of the things that the county needs to do to make this move forward is to sponsor the grant for the fiduciary role only. There's no funds for the county. There's funds that will come from FEMA, the state, and then the township if, you know, they qualify for the grant. So if you have any questions specifically about the process, I'm going to refer you to CCOG, and they can come up here and talk. If not, just looking to approve this pass through grant.
All right. Are there questions for Jason? I know. I really appreciate the work that Jason and CCOG has done. I know this has been an issue that Split Rock Township has been struggling with, so this would be a good solution for them if it comes to pass. Public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment on this item today? All right. Seeing none, I turn it over to the Commission for discussion or for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being here. All right. That takes us to item 14, which is a public hearing to consider a motion to accept the written forfeiture of medical cannabis dispensary license number 23-01 by Genesis Farms LLC in lieu of the Order to Show Cause issued on August 22, 2023 by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners. Tom, good morning.
All right. Good morning. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. As the title indicates, there was an order to show cause to Genesis Farms issued by this body on August 22. Today would have been the date, or today is the date designated as that hearing date. However, on September 15, the Commission received the letter from Genesis Farms forfeiting their license, which would most likely obviate the need to have the hearing. So what I'm asking this morning is for the Commission to accept that letter of forfeiture, which I'll show on the screen. The letter of forfeiture should be on here. Well, it's not right here, but it is online. The letter of forfeiture indicates that they, you know, are certainly forfeiting their license. They provide some reasons. So I would ask this morning that you accept that forfeiture, and for the next item, we'll discuss what the next steps would be.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Tom? So this is a public hearing, which is going to seem a little awkward under the circumstances, but we're going to follow the process. So is there anybody here as a proponent of this item today? All right. Anybody who wants to speak in opposition? All right. So no need for rebuttal. I'll turn it over to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
I'll move to accept the forfeiture.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A roll call vote again. Sorry.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 15, which is to consider a motion to direct the Minnehaha County Auditor to implement the procedures in ordinance MC 60-21 for the issuance of a medical cannabis establishment license due to the availability now of such license.
Okay. Tom Greco again. So the county does now have available a medical cannabis license. What this action that you're going to consider this morning is to direct the auditor to basically implement the procedures outlined in 60-21. I will say that Auditor Anderson will come before you again probably next week or the meeting after to provide an overview of that, what that plan looks like, the timeline. It will include some public notices and certainly the application process and a random selection if there are more than one application. Subject to your questions, that's all I have. I would just ask that you consider this motion to direct the auditor to start taking those steps.
Commissioner Karski.
And I'm in favor of that motion to do that, or the procedure to do that. I'm just wondering, is there anything we've learned in the last year, year and a half with this license that we should possibly clean up within the language? And is that something the auditor would bring to us?
I think, well, I would, I think if it's, we have reviewed the ordinance. I think it's important to note that it's a thorough ordinance. It doesn't include, you know, obviously reference to planning considerations, which we would encourage all applicants to take into account. But at this point, we haven't looked at the ordinance with a view towards changing anything because I believe the process last time, based on all evidences, it worked out pretty well in terms of the application process, but we certainly can take a look at that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tom? Any public comment on this item here today? All right. Seeing none, I turn it over to the Commission for a discussion or a motion.
I'd make a motion to direct the auditor to implement procedures as outlined in MC 6020 for the issue of a medical cannabis license and availability.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to approve change order number four to close out the extension and administration building remodel project. Tom.
Okay. Tom Greco again. This is a good news story. So in 2021, the Commission authorized or entered into a contract for a remodel of the administration building, this room being one of the areas that was added within that remodel and also the extension building. The contractor has fulfilled all their obligations, and the GMP is currently $122,000 less than originally identified. So that takes the project cost from about $465 million down to about $4.5 million. So I would ask you to approve the signing of this change order, which would essentially adjust that final GMP.
All right. Questions for Tom? Anyone for public comment on this item today? If not, I would turn it over to the Commission for a motion on this good news item. Commissioner Karski.
Just, it wasn't 465 million. It was 4.65 million. Yeah.
We only spent 4.6 million.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 17, which is to consider a motion to declare the former highway facility as surplus and authorize the demolition of the building. Steve Groen, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Back on January 30, the Highway Department moved into our new highway facility. Over the course of this year, we've moved all of our equipment that we are going to be using again out of that old facility. On August 22, the Commission approved us to surplus the remaining equipment and fixtures from that building. Today, we're asking your permission to declare the entire building as surplus so we can proceed with demolition.
Questions for Steve? All right. Is there anybody for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would turn it over to the Commission for a motion or discussion.
I'll move to declare the former highway facility as surplus and authorize demolition.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Right. That takes us to item 18. Consider a motion to approve change order number four to the Minnehaha County Highway Department Facility Project for $79,236. Tom.
Okay. So Tom Greco again. Yes, it is $79,000 for this particular change order. So as Steve just mentioned, you just surplus the old highway facility earlier. Last month, you had surplus the equipment in it. So at this point, what we're asking, what Steve, what we're asking is that the building be demolished. What this would do is take the existing contract for the highway facility and use some of the remaining funds. There's $180,000 remaining on the contract. A little more than $79,000 of it would be used for the demolition of the building. And it also includes some electrical work, rerouting of electrical on the campus to account for the destruction of that building. So I would request your approval of this change order.
Questions for Tom? We did have an opportunity to visit about this during our building committee meeting that preceded the Commission meeting. Is there anyone for public comment on this item today? All right. I turn it over to the Commission.
I will move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. I think that takes us to the end of all of our building-related issues. As you can see, we've been pretty busy the last couple of years. It's really satisfying to see some of these projects come to completion and to be able to utilize space like this. It's proven to be very useful to the taxpayers. All right. That takes us to item 19. Authorize the Highway Department to purchase a 2024 Chevy Silverado 3500 under state of South Dakota procurement contract 17618. Steve.
Good morning. Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Back in July, we ordered an identical pickup that was approved for the 23 budget. At the time, Lam Motors suggested that if we were going to buy a pickup in our 24 budget, which has been approved, we should get it ordered sooner than later. Well, it's showing up a lot sooner than anticipated. So what we're proposing to do is we have $50,000 in our budget this year to outfit our weed spraying truck. The new pickup is $49,569. So we're proposing to delay outfitting the weed spraying truck until next year, using those funds to purchase this truck early, and then using the $55,000 in next year's budget to outfit the weed spraying truck. So I'm looking for your permission to get this one ton pickup while we can.
Questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right. I'll turn it over to the Commission. Commissioner Kipli?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Takes us to item 20, which is to authorize the Chairperson to sign Amendment 1 to the Final Design Agreement with Altegg Engineers for Project MC 22-07, Structure 50-337-130 Bridge Replacement. Good morning.
Good morning. Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is a structure replacement that we were successful earlier this year in getting some South Dakota big grant funding for. During the review process, the Department of Transportation had some questions and comments on the structure related to hydrology and construction. In order to allow Altegg to respond to these questions, we needed to amend their contract to allow for more time for some minor redesign work. We're looking for your permission to enter into this amendment with Altegg Engineers so they complete the additional work.
All right. Questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right. Turn it over to the Commission. Further discussion or a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second. All right. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Right. Takes us to item 21. Authorize the Chairperson to sign the balancing change order for MC 21-10 50-330-066. for MC 21-10 50-330-066. Steve.
Good morning again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This is the bridge on County Highway 103 on the southeast side of Sherman. This project was recently completed. This also was a big funded project from the Department of Transportation. Due to some construction issues last year, the project was delayed. The project is now done. This is a request to approve the balancing change order so we can sign off on this project. It is actually a reduction in the contract price of $48,694, mostly due to liquidated damages that were assessed because of the project delays.
All right, any questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, turn it over to the commission for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Steve's not done with us yet, though. Item 22 is authorize the chairperson to sign Amendment Number 1 to the Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc. for MC 20-12 50-087-120.
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This was a township bridge north of Hartford that we received big funding for preliminary engineering. The DOT is recommending seven box culverts to replace this bridge over Skunk Creek. SEH reviewed their documentation and feels that we could reduce the number of box culverts to six in an effort to redo the design and hydrology. We would like to enter into a contract with SEH, a contract amendment, to make these changes. We've had preliminary discussions with the Bridge Office at the DOT and they are receptive to doing this review. Our goal is to get this project done, completed with final design by the end of the year so that we can apply for a big replacement funding on January 2nd. By doing this amendment, we would get 10 additional points on that big application on the first year. So we're seeking your approval to amend the contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson for just under $4,000.
Questions for Steve? Commissioner Karski.
Steve, the 10 points on the big grant application, is that a big deal?
It's a really big deal. It's 100 points maximum. We lost one bridge application last year by a point and a half, another one by two and a half points.
And what's the grant that's given for a typical big?
On this project, it's about a $2 million structure. If we're going 80/20, that means that the county would receive 1.6 million dollars.
Pretty big deal.
It's a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item this morning? All right, consider a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 23. Authorize the chairperson to sign Amendment 1 to the South Dakota DOT Grant Agreement for Project MC 22-13 PCN 08WK Structure 50-330-026 Repap. Steve.
Good morning again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This is also another South Dakota big funded project. This was the rehabilitation of a bridge on Highway 103 north of Sherman that went out for bids about a year ago and the bids came in very high, so we rejected all bids. I approached the DOT while getting additional funding through a program that they have. The state did authorize an additional 15% funding on this project. This motion is to allow us to accept additional state funding to proceed with rebidding this project.
Questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, this takes us to item 24, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Tyler Technologies for Register of Deed document pro recording software. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Halsey, Register of Deeds. I'm here to, like that says, to ask for authorization, authorization to sign the agreement with Tyler Technologies for a new recording software for our office. We're currently using the AS400 program, which, as many of you know, is not something that we can continue to use for the long term. We've looked at options in the past. My predecessor started looking, but ultimately decided to leave the decision up to me as I came into office. So right away, I started looking at different options. I visited with Lincoln County early in the spring and they use DocPro. They love it. And then over 30 other counties in the state also use DocPro. So within the state, it has a good track record. Many of the counties have used it for upwards of a decade already. And so DocPro knows what the state needs and they're willing to make the adjustments as state law changes. I also reached out to several other counties in different states. Hard to find comparable counties to us, of course, but one was Sonoma County in California, which is actually 400,000, and they use Tyler Technologies for their recording software for their land. The other one that I had was Liberty, Texas, and they're about 100,000. They use DocPro and they, they like it. I would say that the biggest thing for you guys to know is that it's not going to be a cost out of the general budget. It's a $90,000 software implementation, but all of that money can come out of the M&amp;P fund, which is funds that only the Register of Deeds office can use. It's the $3 out of every $30 recording fee. Right now, we have a surplus, but I already have it budgeted for this exact software cost going into next year. I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Karski.
Sounds like a good use of the M&amp;P funds, Amanda. What is the balance of that fund? You said there's a surplus. Do you know the balance of it?
I, I want to say it's over 200,000 right now.
Okay, so it'll still leave you plenty of money in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't believe we're still using an AS400 application, so have my support on this.
It works, but it won't work forever.
Need to go to the nursing home to get the IT guy to fix it if you have a problem, so.
Madam Chair, one clarifying question for you, Amanda. I'm good with the substance. I just noticed in your memo to us, though, it's asking us to sign, authorize signing the agreement pending legal review. Has the state's attorney looked at this yet?
He has. Yep, it's, it's all been cleared up. It's, we've returned it to DocPro. They made the changes and then they returned it signed to us. So the legal, the legal, it's all been looked at.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thanks.
Anyone for public comment on this item this morning? Welcome to come forward.
Ellen, we, and I was just curious, is it, is this going to allow the documents to be online for, for people to access and possibly corrupt?
Go ahead.
So that was definitely a big thing that I looked at when I was looking at different software options and talking to some of the other counties within the state. There are some counties within the state that are trying to put their records online. That is not something that our office is looking to do at all. So there was another software program that the majority of the counties that do want their records online use. So I avoided even considering that software because it seems like that software, the salespeople try to push putting their records online. So that was a huge part of the conversation, talking with the representatives from DocPro, saying, "We won't be doing that." In, in my term anyways, we won't be putting our records online.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, turn it over to the commission for further discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for bringing that forward. I just would like to remind folks that are speaking at public comment to make sure you've signed in over in the corner, so we have your address, please. All right, that takes us to item 25. Consider a motion to approve a method of auction and authorize the auditor to publish a notice of public auction for county surplus property. Good morning.
Good morning. So last meeting, we deferred a decision about a method to use for the public surplus auction. So before you today, I have two different notices that we prepared. I worked with the state's attorney's office on going through this. And so anyway, when we presented this last week about the use of public surplus online auction for the sale of property that was acquired by the Treasurers Tax deed due to delinquent taxes, interest, and costs, we talked about what we've done in the past, which was have a live auction on a Saturday. And that means extra weekend hours for myself and at least four staff members, also the sheriff's office and the treasurer's office. And so I had looked into this option of using public surplus online auction. I think there's a lot of benefits to using that. I won't go through all of them again today, but it would definitely give us flexibility in our sale so that during an election year, we can still hold a sale if we need to. It also gives the bidders options. Once they identify a property that they're interested in and they get registered, they can bid from anywhere, so they don't have to be here for a certain time and day. We would keep the window open likely for 24 hours for this sale. There would be a viewing timeframe of about 15 days prior to the sale. And so one of the questions you guys had last week was references, so I did forward to you some references that I was able to obtain. And one of the best ones was South Dakota Property Management through the State of South Dakota. So they have used this platform for eight years. One of her comments, well, everybody loved the platform, but one of her comments was that they wish that they would have gone with the process of having public surplus collect the funds from the very beginning. They just recently started doing that three years ago. And so they're, they've been very happy with public surplus, but also having them do all the fund collections, which takes a little bit of that off of our plate as far as having to collect the funds and then divvy them out to different entities. But they, we would still have to take the funds and cover our taxes or any federal tax liens. And then the remaining funds due to the court case in Minnesota, Tyler versus Hennepin County, we have talked about the need of our legislators to have to update those laws with the remaining funds. But our current plan would be to set those funds aside that would go back to the property owner or their heirs, whoever is supposed to get those funds. We would not keep any excess funds basically as well. So before you are two notices and I'm asking for you to, one, choose a method and then that would determine which notice we would publish, so whether it's the live auction or the public surplus online auction.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for the auditor? I'd personally just like to thank you for calling the references. I thought that was very helpful to me. It's particularly helpful to know that the State of South Dakota has been doing this for eight years and has been very happy, kind of, and wishes they'd done it longer. So that was helpful to me, just to know that other people have had firsthand experience with it. Commissioner Karski.
I'm just happy that we're coming into the next century, even though it just started 25 years ago, just about. So I'm supportive of the online option also. I think the homework was done and I think it, it's going to give not only the property owner that's in arrears the best value, I think it's going to give every taxpayer in Minnehaha County the best value.
All right, is there anyone for public comment on this item this morning? Seeing none, I turn it over to the commission for further discussion or for a motion.
I would move approval.
So I, I think I need a specific motion that identifies the option that we are recommending.
I make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of public auction using the online platform.
Perfect, thank you.
And I would second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 26. It's to consider a motion to approve an invoice from Election Systems and Software LLC in the amount of $31,368.10. Leah, good morning.
Good morning, Leah, again from the auditor's office. So yes, before you, I have an invoice that we've been doing a lot of talk about what our limits are as far as approvals in our, talking about our purchasing policies. So this invoice is above my authority to approve. It is for the extended warranty and firmware licenses for three of the DS 850 tabulators and 103 Express votes. The period this payment covers is October of '23 to September of '24 in the amount of $31,368.10. I did a little research on going back and looking at previous invoices and agreements. It looks like that we have agreements, purchase agreements, which talk about these, this pricing from 2014, 2015, 2017, 2019, and 2020, and those were for various purchases. So I reached out to ESNS to ask if they had an updated agreement for these prices and they haven't gotten back to me on that. So it's my, my thought that we should have some type of agreement because the prices seem to go up every two years, but we don't have anything laid out to agree to those prices. So, I mean, my, my thought is in '24, the prices will go up again, but I don't have any confirmation on that. So basically, this item is just to approve this invoice so that we can pay it. We don't really have options on getting other quotes or bids on this. So that's all I have for this item.
Commissioner Karski.
I just find it funny that this takes us up to six weeks before the big election next year. We can't get beyond that?
No, well, we'll have another one. I mean, we get this invoice every year. The unfortunate thing is earlier in the year, in March, we had, the same invoice came through. I, I was new, so I didn't know the process very well, but that invoice actually covered the previous year. And so this is the invoice, I think I emailed to a couple of you to let you know that we could potentially go over budget because of this, because in '22, we should have received an invoice for the same amount, but we received both of them this year, so. But we'll wait and see how that plays out at the end of the year.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd turn it to the commission for...
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Right, that takes us to item 27, which is to authorize the chair to sign a services agreement with Election Systems and Software LLC.
Okay, Leah Anderson, again, auditor from the auditor's office. So in contrast to the previous invoice for our extended warranty and firmware licenses, ESNS does provide us with an agreement every three years, but that agreement is for election services, which will determine what we pay for ballot layout, coding, file, voice file services, ballot printing, and those items with election systems and services. So the sum of, I added up what we spent in '22 and the sum of that was $123,679. So due to the sum of these expenses, I also am asking for your authorization or your signature on this agreement because in congregate for the year, it exceeds my spending authority. And then since our elections are different for every election as far as what we would pay for those services, I did a little bit of figuring. I took the 22 invoices and I compared them to the new pricing. I also included, if you go down, I think I included in here a spreadsheet of, that I put together of the pricing. So that's the agreement. And then there should be a spreadsheet that I put in for you to look at, at the pricing increases. So what I did was I took the 22 invoices, refigured what the pricing would have been on this new agreement, and it looks like we had about a 13% to 15% increase in costs overall. And so that's what I would expect going forward, but in '24, our elections could be completely different because we have a lot more issues that could be on the ballot, so that could change the pricing as well. So that's why I'm bringing this agreement to you. I'm also bringing this agreement to you because when I spoke with our state's attorney's office about codified law, which is 12-17B-3, it puts you as the governing board in authority of deciding if we're going to use, or how, how we're going to conduct our elections in the county. So one final thought I have is with our partnership with ESNS, while I do love technology and moving into future centuries with things like the public surplus auction, I also like to be cautious with technology when it comes to something like our elections. As we introduce more technology, I feel like we take away some of the electoral process from the people. So anyway, just a reminder that we are a representative republic and that the citizens should be able to be involved with our election process. And I am very much in favor of maybe being a county that experiments with doing like random hand counts at the precinct level in addition to using the tabulators so that we can know that we're doing things right.
So is that part of your motion? Is that something that we're, why are you bringing that up right now?
Because it's your authority to approve the agreement with ESNS, but it's also your authority to decide how we're going to conduct elections.
Are we deciding that right now?
By signing the agreement, I believe so.
I'm confused.
I am too.
The agreement needs to be signed by the chair, so I don't have the authority to sign this agreement.
Commissioner Karski.
Typically, we have the power of what they call... Typically, we have the power of what they call the pen with the budget, and I was under the impression we were approving this, the expenditure of the money, the $123,000. What you're telling us is basically placing us as the election authority.
Well, when I spoke with our state's attorney's office about 12-17B-3, which I have here, it says, "Any governing body having supervision of elections within any political subdivision may adopt, experiment with, or abandon any automatic tabulating or electronic ballot marking system approved for use by the State Board of Elections. Any governing body may use the system in all or in some of the precincts within its jurisdictions or in combination with any type of voting system approved for use by the State Board of Elections." So I was told that I'm not the governing body.
Commissioner Karski.
How time sensitive is this? Because I think I need more time to understand exactly what it is we're getting into here.
Well, the agreement is just the agreement for services.
But you're trying to address other issues in the statements that you made besides this agreement.
Correct.
So that's why we need more time. You didn't prepare us to talk about that today? Wasn't in your memo?
I'm just asking you to give it some consideration. I'm not asking you to make a decision on that.
Anybody else have any comments?
The water got really muddy here.
Intentionally, I believe. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item today? You can take your turn and you can come forward, thank you.
I don't think we have...
No, no, if you, people need to come forward and speak at the mic, one at a time, please.
My name's Brenda Huddleson, I'm from here in Sioux Falls. I don't think we have near enough information. There's way too much incongruity there, and this is a major issue, our elections, and a major point of controversy, and we cannot approve an invoice and yet, which commits $123,000 to electronic voting system, and yet, and I, and yet, not vet out whether we do or do not have the authority, whether the auditor do or doesn't, or does not have the authority, and whether the commissioners know and appreciate and understand that as well. I agree with the commissioners on that, and it needs to be vetted, not only with commissioners, but with the public. This is a very controversial item.
Yeah, Ellen, read again. And I like the fact that you had an audit of something and it was approved and no problems. And I just am upset that we can't get any information from these machines. They have CVR records. I asked for a foyer for CVR records. The response I got was, "They don't exist and they're company proprietary." How can they be both? So this commission, apparently the auditor doesn't have the power, but this commission does have the power to either get the information or by golly, get rid of this crummy company because they're not giving us the ability to audit them. And if you're looking here and you think that you can't audit this company, you just gave the election away because they hide the information. So I would recommend that you guys evaluate this, just like you did the audit of the finances, audit of everything. Get it, so you can look at it and see what these guys are doing, because you have no idea what's behind the scenes. It's so sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Souls from Brandon. I'm just curious, what are the implications of just saying, "We don't want to deal with ESNS, they have a bad reputation, and we don't, we just say, 'No, we're not going to approve that invoice,'" and what would be the implications there?
So I am very much not an election expert, and I don't understand everything that's going on here, but based on what's I'm hearing this meeting, I'm, my, a lot of what I got is that part of the reason for this contract and this agreement is related to just printing the ballots and then how they're tabulated is another issue entirely. Now, I mean, even the, of what was discussed of, hey, we're getting different fees each year and we don't really understand that, I mean, that alone sounds like kind of a red flag, but when it comes to counting ballots, I think one of the things to consider is that when you use a machine to count ballots, well, it's the machine that's, that's counting them, and whoever's responsible for the programming of that machine, well, I mean, you'd certainly hope that it would be done honestly, but at the end of the day, when you're leaving it to a machine to count them, you are trusting, and we live in a world where you can't necessarily trust everyone's doing what they should be. Now, as was pointed out, it is the, I mean, there is no requirement that the, that machines be used to tabulate this ballots. We can go to hand counting, I mean, we can go and say, hey, we're going to count these in person where each, where we're getting each person, where we can double check and we know the process fully through. And they're very much, I mean, for how many years, how many decades, I mean, well over a cent, look, I don't know the exact year math, but for the longest time, elections were done without any electronics machines at all. I am old enough that I can remember when the internet was first a thing, when, and realistically, I think that for sake of putting in, making sure it's in the hands of people who are actually here, who, we can, we can check each person, we can check, we can double check that kind of thing, I, I mean, you can go on about cost or about time, but given the fact, the long experience, the long time period where there were no options of those machines, I really think that if there is the authorization to have just hand counting, not trusting machines, and especially in an environment where machines and we unquestionably question, you know, what is their role in society, I really think we ought to be going and focusing on just hand counting entirely.
I'm going to give everybody the opportunity for public comment, but I'd really request that you not repeat each other, please.
Okay, well, my name is Penny Baybridge, and I live here in Sioux Falls. I just wanted to say I approve of the auditor's recommendation that you sign it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Carrie Meyer, Minnehaha County. I was, Saturday night, I was to a political fundraiser in Utica, South Dakota, down by Yankton, and I would say there was close to 200 people there. And there was a presentation given by South Dakota Canvassing on our elections, and there were several times during that presentation where the audience clearly would gasp at some of the information being presented. Last night, I was at a, another event in Mitchell, South Dakota, where South Dakota Canvassing gave a presentation, and I would say there was 40 people there, and again, the people in attendance were set back by the amount of information that South Dakota Canvassing has produced. And in Mitchell, I would say there were four counties, people from four counties that were there because they're interested in our elections. People are more and more getting concerned and have questions about our elections, and part of that presentation is with ESNS software and their connections and tactics that they use and their secrecy that they have. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe I've ever seen any of you at one of these presentations, and I would request that you attend one. I think it would be eye-opening for you and maybe would lead you to more questions about why we're so against signing an agreement with ESNS software and going back to hand counting. And I would invite your county reporter to do the same. The previous speaker talked about an election expert. I would say South Dakota Canvassing is close to election experts as you're going to get. When you build a bridge, you hire a structural engineer. If you're going to build a church, you want clergy involved, but it seems when it comes to elections, you don't want us involved at all, and we have literally thousands of hours of research into our elections. So I would question signing any agreement with ESNS software.
Anyone else?
Randy Amison is my name, I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I prepared nothing for this meeting. I have no notes. I was a businessman for a number of years. I believe in, in trust, but verify. If I received a shipment from a supplier, I didn't take it for granted that he charged me the right amount, I made sure he did. I didn't take it for granted that he sent me the right number of items, I made sure he did. And that's only my best interest that I was concerned in, and my company's best interest. We're talking about the best interest of the voters of Minnehaha County here. I believe that the best thing that the governing body from Minnehaha County can do is not trust and validate. Voting is the most sacred right I have as an American citizen. My vote needs to count as much as anyone else's, and I have to have the ability to make sure that however the votes are tabulated, that I have an opportunity to go in and ensure that they're tabulated in the appropriate and correct manner. That's our, that's, that's your duty as a servant of the people of Minnehaha County, and I believe that it bears much more research with the, for the, for the governing body to make sure that, number one, everything is tabulated in an, in an honest and forthright manner. Number two, that there is an ability by, by any interest group to take a look at how that was done. And number three, that there be an expert that has some kind of knowledge on the programming and capabilities of any electronic machines that are used for any kind of nefarious action to take place. That's merely a, 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 a responsibility that has to be assumed by someone, and I don't believe it has been. Now, I don't know that there's ever anything that's gone wrong in Minnehaha County, but I don't know that there hasn't been either. And I think that's a pretty important distinction. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Once again, I remind you, please do not repeat things that have already been said.
Thank you. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County, and I just want to, I just want to remind you that I stood up here the day that you canvassed the votes for the '22 election, and I told you about votes that were dropped during the election counting. I told you the number of names Gerald Bennega, you had drops, you had votes that were dropped, and there was not a single question that was asked. These votes are being tabulated by ESNS machines. We know that they're compromised, we know that they're online. You had Agale up here talking about the register of deeds, and she doesn't want her information online because it's too easily hacked, but yet, all of our voting information is found online. So I asked you the day that you canvassed the votes, aren't you concerned because these votes got dropped? They got dropped, they got added back in, no one could address what happened to those votes, and yet you went right ahead and you certified the election. Well, this is the same company that we're talking about now that you want to extend a contract with, the same company that you couldn't answer the question as to what happened to the votes that got dropped. So I would just ask you, these are my, this is my vote that's being counted as well, and my vote is being, I'm being enfranchised, I can't even think of the word. Disenfranchised, thank you, Leah. And I would, I would ask that you do some more due diligence before you continue to throw money at this company that we know is corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. I'm from McCook County, and I just want to say, I'll, I'll volunteer to hand count. If we go to hand counting, I'll be here, I'll sit here all night, two, three days, whatever it takes, but I truly believe the only way to ensure our election is accurate is a hand count anymore. Everything's hacked nowadays, and the register of deeds, if they don't want that information online, I'm with Cindy. It's, we have to protect our elections, the most important thing that we have as citizens, and we, the people, our rights have been taken away from us. So I'm here to volunteer to hand count. I'll be here all night long.
Ma'am, could you please give us your name? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Darla, from McCook County, Shelburg.
Okay, and you signed in?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Foss, Minnehaha County. I would just like to say, just as all of you were elected to your positions by the people, Leah Anderson was elected by the people to do a job, and I'd like to let you, I'd like to ask that you let Leah Anderson do the job that she was elected to do.
Thank you.
Good morning, thanks for your service. Mike Osted, Northeast Minnehaha County. Not to reiterate what was said, we don't want to repeat, but the gentleman before Cindy had said about, wasn't exactly his points about, maybe not specifics in Minnehaha County, but I'd like to emphasize the specifics of voter issues in Minnehaha County. In minutely created District Two, which is Northeast Sioux Falls, Brandon Valley Springs, the distribution of ballots, the counting of ballots, the tallying, the precinct lineup was problematic, and to be understood, with the new district or the new, every 10 years from the censuses, that was to be expected, there'd be more hiccups. It'd be new districts redrawn, which mine has been redrawn three times in the last 12 years. Candidates, different even new precincts or canceled out precincts. It create a little bit more of a workload for the previous auditor, which may be one of the reasons why he, this person's previous due the elections, because it was a screw-up. We can go back to District Nine in Hartford, they were missing ballots, they were short, there were incorrect distribution and names for diff, in the wrong precincts. In my precinct, or my District Two in Valley Springs, they had to shut down one of the precincts on a hotly contacted, contested new election. Tens of thousands of dollars were spent on new candidates. We all have new, we all had new candidates for the state legislature in District Two. So it was all new blood, all new names, and it was a mess. And there was a lot of money behind that mess that should have been made sure that these things were right, and they weren't right, and ESS is part of that problem as well. So I'd ask that you review that, whether it's Utica in Yankton County or meetings in Davison County in Mitchell, it's right here in Minnehaha. I'd ask that we can, we, we be more accountable and get these things correct and review the problems of ESS and other management in the counting of our elections.
Good morning, my name is Rian Alum. I am also a resident of Minnehaha County. I do not trust these machines. I expect you as commissioners to be good stewards of my money, and I don't believe the use of these machines is being a good steward of the dollars that we donate as I would like you to consider not using machines at all. I'd like to go back to being old school, hand count, where everyone can trust that their vote is being counted properly and the way they wanted. Thank you.
All right, if there's no more public comment, I'm going to turn it over. Mr. Colby?
Good morning, Rob Colby. I think everybody is missing one thing about elections. Everyone who has a right to vote should be able to vote as easily as possible. Everyone who has a right to vote. Here the people are talking about the count... Here, the people are talking about the count, but they're not talking about the people having a right to vote and being able to count with ease.
All right. Anyone else? Come forward, please don't repeat anything that's been said. Thank you.
Brenda Huddleson, Sioux Falls. I just want to be real quick and putting a thought out there. And yes, it's kind of a harbinger, harbinger, whatever. But if our state's attorney is telling us we don't have the authority to make some of our own decisions, should the state's attorney, should that be corrected in our legislature and in our laws? Is that, should that correctly be there? And, and two, is anybody looking to see whether the state's attorney is correctly interpreting what he does? I know we have a county attorney. But, but, I mean, are these things being correctly interpreted? And two, should they be there in the first place? Do they need overturn, changed?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to take the conversation back to where it started, which was a motion brought forward by the auditor to approve services from the election systems and software. This is a system that's been well-vetted out by our Secretary of State. We've received a lot of information about this system. The sole motion before the commission right now is whether to approve the charges that, for the system that the county's been using for a long time. And any concerns about elections should be addressed by the audits that were put in place by the legislature that's going to be going forward. And so I would turn it over to the commission right now to address the specific item that was brought forward by the auditor where she has asked us to authorize the chair to sign the services agreement with election systems and software. And I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Karski?
Getting a mixed message here. Are you asking us to approve this or not?
I am asking you to.
Okay, thank you.
Sign.
So she is asking us to approve it.
Okay. Are you forfeiting your role as the election officer to the county commission? That's what I'm hearing you.
I'm not forfeiting my role as auditor. I was told that my role in making decisions was not, I'm not the governing board.
You're very conveniently not the governing board this morning, that's for sure.
Madam Chair, I guess I would just say, if the auditor has an affirmative agenda, I would say bring it. I don't really appreciate the smuggling in of other issues to what I think is pretty routine. We're paying for a warranty on equipment and we're paying for election services to print ballots. If we want to bring up a method of counting, I would bring that up in an affirmative way. I just don't get the, this kind of punctious pilot washing my hands. I'm, I'm just a tribune to the people and I will, you know, let the public commentators come up and smuggle in all of these issues that have frankly been litigated in court. We've seen defamation lawsuits against voting, for voting machine companies come back with multi-hundreds of millions of dollar verdict. So I don't think we really want to get in the business of defaming ESNS or anyone else for that matter. So I just, I just don't really like the way that this was set up and brought before us. I just think this, I really just don't have a lot of patience for the nonsense around the election fraud stuff. I'm old enough, I came of age in the 2000 election. There was a sore loser in that election, too. Every election in our free society has a losing side. And that losing side needs to learn how to lose and come back, change, win over the people and win the next election. 2004 had the same issues. 2016 had a losing side that was very bitter. 2020 had a losing side that is now bitter. But the losing side always saying that there's the causation, the only way we could lose was there must have been fraud. I think that causation now is flipping, that if you're claiming fraud, you're going to lose the winning side of an argument to come up before us and say, every machination is a conspiracy against us. So I'm just, I'm not going to have a lot of patience for this. But if the auditor, as the county auditor duly elected, has an affirmative agenda of what you want to do with elections, bring it forward. But I'm happy to make a motion to approve this service agreement because I think this is the routine business of the county and I'd like to get on with more business.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, this is our opportunity for public comment about an item that is not on the agenda for today.
My intention for, Bob Colby, my intention was to give you a little historic perspective on something that has happened with the county and that I had a participation in. There was an oil spill up by Sorems Corner, which is the Renner Corner and a little bit east. It was a major spill in the United States. I think it was around 400,000 gallons of petroleum product that had to be land farmed. When this was brought up, something had to be done. So who got involved? The Attorney General's Office sent a representative, dirt and water from the state, East Dakota Water Development, Minnehaha Conservation District, and the Minnehaha County Commission. We thought, since it was outside of the city, well, we said, let's involve the city also. So the city of Sioux Falls was involved in this committee. We were spoken to and given advice from the EPA on what was going to happen and how the oil company would deal with us. And they said, divide and conquer. We did a lot of meetings. We came up with a solution that had to be, or we thought would be a fine way of dealing with this and dealing with something positive for the community. We came up with the idea of a double-walled pipe that would come from the west side of the Big Sioux to the east side of the Big Sioux. It would, anything, this would be from Renberg essentially over to Midway Corner. And that that would be double-walled. So if there was a spill or a fracture in the pipe, the oil would be contained. And this seemed like a good, reasonable solution, not dealing with the whole pipeline, just dealing with the pipeline that was over the Aquifer. Well, we included the city of Sioux Falls simply because they got their water from the Big Sioux Aquifer. We were then all, we dealt with this for quite a period of time, and you can look it up because it's in the record and it's also in the press at the time. We were asked to come down to the Black Watch, which is now the city parking lot by the federal building. And this is now my opinion. The mayor called everybody together. He had personally settled with the oil pipeline company. None of the other committee members had done anything like this, and I think he threw us all under the bus. Now, Mayor Gary Hanson is on the Public Utilities Commission. As you can see, I am a little bit apprehensive on his decisions that he renders from that point. Double-walled pipe. We've had spills from the tank farm going south to the Hayward. There were spills where Costco is because that was Dan Dugan. We've had spills underground that were up by the Holger Anderson, which is up on like 60th Street North on Cliff Avenue. This is contaminated material, contaminated soil with petroleum product. You will be dealing with other pipelines as they come about. I'm not, you have to deal with it and you have to get the background. But this is one that happened in Minnehaha County. I knew a person who used to check that pipeline. You know how they did it? They rented an airplane and they flew the length of the pipeline wherever it came from and wherever it went to. And they looked for, up from the ground came the bubbling ooze. If it surfaced, they knew they had a leak. We were trying to get this so that there would be pressure-sensitive stations on both ends of this pipeline or this double-walled so that people would know that there was something awry. There's a whole lot of information that you can deal with, but this is part of Minnehaha County's history with pipelines. You can get a list of the pipelines that are in our community that we are not generally appraised of or know of. And if you ever have some questions about that, you can ask me at another point in time. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else for an item not on our agenda today? Good morning.
Thank you, Penny Baybridge. I actually came here today with a little present, you know, thing I was going to talk about, but I'm new to all this. I'm part of the public that's, you know, starting to pay attention, semi-retired, now attending things. And I learned today that when that gavel comes down, the meeting starts. Who knows what's going to be discussed? I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the service that you have been doing. And for many of you, many years, you've been doing that. You understand the procedures, you understand how things are done. But for a lot of the public just starting to come out, you know, they're raw and they, you know, they're passionate about things. And I would just ask that, you know, the public, it's not responsible if people prove anything, but for those in a vicious capacity, prove to the public that things are going well. And if there's an issue, to please, we should look at some way to resolve it, set up a way of talking and finding out what the issue is and resolve it. And again, I appreciate your respectful demeanor. And I hope you, you know, cut a little slack sometimes when people are passionate about what they're doing. But again, it is, the public is concerned about things and that's why they get up and speak. But thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? Good morning.
Morning. Betty Strum, Sioux Falls. I'm just here to comment on how much landowners and tenants appreciate Minnehaha County's leadership in developing and passing intelligent land use ordinances in regard to the CO2 pipeline and their project, their proposed projects. Also, the time and effort that the staff and, and all of you have spent to listen to your constituents here in Minnehaha County from across the county, not just local or whatever, and finding ways to assist with their concerns and their issues. And so we thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, that takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? Commissioner Karski?
I missed last week, so maybe you uncovered this a little bit, but I got bit by the COVID. Yes, it still is a thing, I guess. So two weeks ago, we had our State Association of County Officials and County Commissioners meeting. It was here in Sioux Falls. Next year, I believe it'd be in Rapid City. It's a great organization. I received the title that I was looking for, past president. So it is a good thing. But I truly enjoyed serving in the leadership on that association. I think we elevated our status with the legislators. There's still a lot to do, and I just want everybody to keep that in mind as we head into the legislative session. We will be seeing legislators at different functions and events. And yeah, I think that the wheels are turning in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you. We did visit about it last week a little bit and thanked you, and I'll thank you again for your service. It's a lot of, it's a pretty heavy lift and we appreciate all that you've done with that, leading that organization. Other, we'll start down at the end and move down.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just got updates from three planning and zoning meetings last night. We had the joint meeting with Del Rapids, the joint meeting with Sioux Falls, just had the one item on the short-term rental element that City Councilor Nitschert requested an amendment. So that came back to the Planning Commission level and then will now, we'll see that at the end of the month with the Joint County Commission and Sioux Falls City Council again. And then we also heard this body deferred an item related to Mueller ballots and a location near the landfill. We deferred that out to November to make room for Mueller ballots had an alternative location that was approved unanimously at the Planning Commission last night. So that will become, come before this body in the near future as well. So that's the extent of my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanenga?
Just very briefly, Commissioner Bender and I participated in a Juvenile Justice Center update, which is one of many we've been involved with. We're getting close to, again, guaranteed maximum price hopefully in the next few months. And with the Fair Association, the Fair Board is meeting on a regular basis with, dealing with frankly, the weather-related issues that they had during the fair and how that had some impact, obviously, and dealing with insurance. That's all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bleyenberg?
Just briefly, also, I wanted to mention I had an opportunity to meet with the Sulan Libraries Director, Jody Fick, this week, this past week. And just wanted to publicly thank our library staff for the effort that they put in with the programming, but also with the sometimes challenging populations that they deal with. They just, I feel they are owed a big thank you for the effort that they put in and the service that they provide us.
All right, thank you. Just Commissioner Bleyenberg and I also had an opportunity to attend the MacArthur Safety and Justice Implementation Team meeting last week. And we're working on our final tranche of money in that. There were a lot of good updates, I thought. The courts did do their initial run of a warrant resolution court where they're offering opportunities for people who qualify to come in one evening after work and resolve their warrants. And the initial one was, I think, maybe rather lightly attended, but the people that were all, everybody there that came was able to resolve their warrants. And I think they're, they think that they are onto something that will be really beneficial to a lot of people in our community. And the next one is scheduled in the second Tuesday of October. So it'll be interesting to hear more about that. And I appreciate all the work that the court system, particularly the judges, have put into that process. We also got a report out on the summer events that were funded through that grant. They served over more than 550 people this summer at various events and parks, particularly in some underserved areas in the community. A lot of health, free health screenings and dental fluoride treatments were provided. A lot of fun was had by folks that were attended as well. So that's always great to hear. I think that was, I think that was some of our highlights. Anyone have anything else? All right, any non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd enter, I mean, I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll take about a 10-minute break and then we'll go into executive session. Thank you.